Good evening, everybody. Thank you for attending our December 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Before we get started, we'll stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance, and Mr. Covert will lead us in the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, we just come before you tonight asking for your wisdom as we make decisions on behalf of our city. Lord, we ask you to be with our president, with our political leaders, Lord, with our mayor and his staff and all leaders across the country. And we thank you for those who are giving service in the military and being away from their families this holiday. We ask this all in Jesus' name, amen.
Before I call the meeting to order, I just wanted to... For the Planning Commission, there's been a couple of meetings that I've missed throughout the year. And most recently was for the passing of my father this past week. And I just wanted to appreciate you guys in my absence and everything on it and continue to see things through and just appreciate all of the prayers and thoughts through that whole thing. Just wanted to appreciate you all for that. I will call this meeting to order if we could do roll call.
Gary Compton.
Here.
Roy Covert.
Here.
Vidi Haney. Shannon Mueller.
Here.
Peyton Parker. Kevin Parsley.
Here.
Aaron Panado.
Here.
Brian Powell.
Here.
Dale Tyler.
Here.
And the minutes for November, any questions or comments?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Powell.
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item on the agenda, Springdale Planning Commission, the 2019 schedule of meeting dates and submission deadlines presented by Patsy Christie.
You had that in your packet. What we do every year is adopt this as our calendar for the year so that we all know what the deadlines are. They're published and we can move forward with that. We, for the most part, guarantee they're all correct. We've all looked at them two or three times and every once in a while, we miss one. But I recommend this be adopted so we can move forward with the next calendar year.
Be a motion or just a call for a vote?
A motion.
Motion to move them forward is adopted.
Motion by Mr. Covert, second by Mr. Compton.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Panado.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
The calendar for next year passes. Next section, tabled items, B-18-49, Prisma Ramirez, 4138 Bacchus, variance of deviation of side setback presented by Prisma Ramirez.
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
So basically, on our property, we built like a porch to the side of the house. And it's one foot too close to the neighbor. That's what we were told. So we had to submit paperwork for variance to see if it's okay to keep it as it is. Our neighbor had to have his tear down because once the city went out there, they noticed his was worse than ours. So I submitted pictures and paperwork. So I should all be with you guys.
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
Did we have anything from our fire department on this?
Okay, I was just gonna ask Mike or Dwayne, give us a little help on this one. They got a permit for this one, correct?
Yes, we submitted a... We asked for a permit to build. And we were told to just build it on top of where this slab is from the property. But whenever it was built, they made it that one foot too close, I mean, to outside. And that's the issue.
It's the overhang that actually is too close.
Yeah, that's the only one foot.
Okay, Mike, can you talk about the distances? Is it in the setback?
Yes.
The side setback of the... Or is it a fire code violation?
It's not a fire code violation.
Okay.
It is approximately six foot, six inches from the property line, working on the assumption the fence is the property line.
Yes, that's what we assumed.
Of course, it is an eight-foot setback at that particular lot on both sides. And so she encroaches roughly eighteen inches into it.
Eighteen inches into the setback, but it still meets fire code separations between...
This is not a fire code issue.
Okay.
It's just an ordinance issue.
When they submit a plan for that, does it indicate that they would have to be at the edge of the slab that's there? Was there any discussion about the overhang?
If you recall, Ms. Patsy, there's no such thing as residential plan review. When they submit a permit application and ask to build a course, they're told what the setbacks are in writing on the permit they sign as well as the card they take with them that says thirty foot in the front, twenty foot in the rear, eight foot on the sides. When we recall for the first inspection, the structure was built.
Okay. And that... And I'm just asking because I haven't seen it. Does it actually indicate from the edge of the overhang? And maybe that's the clarification needs to be made on those that...
Does what say from the edge of the overhang?
The setbacks indicate from the overhang or from the wall?
It's incumbent upon the contractor or permit holders, no, it's from the first projected point of the structure, whether it be an overhang, a bay window, or whatever else it may be. There's no discussion for us among slabs or concrete patios being poured.
Okay. I just wanted to figure out if, you know, maybe we need to do a little bit more education about where that setback actually goes into effect. But in this case, it's not a fire code violation. It's a setback into... I mean, it's a violation to the side setback.
Any other questions?
No, but I mean, in the past, I think, especially with something like that, it looks like you could take that overhang off if it comes where the slab was, which was what you originally requested.
So what it is, you can't see on that picture, but on the... If you turn, there's another picture. There's like a thing made like this on the property. We did that so it would have a better view. So that's why that was built all the way out there. Because... Or else it would've just been built to that, where the X is built in the middle of the top of the porch. Because the way our house is built, where the window is connected to our kitchen, they were having a really hard time to make... Connect it to the home because it was needing to connect directly to the structure. So that's why we had to do such a steep pitch in order for it to be built that way.
Are you referring to this picture?
Yes.
Okay, but looking at this picture, could it be cut off right here where this brace is right there and then overhang be taken off? I think that's what you're asking, right? That's what we've had people do before, is take that piece off.
Just cut it off.
You know, and I feel bad because it looks really good, but then it starts setting a precedence of we've got that setback and...
Any other questions or comments? Should be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mr. Covert.
Covert.
Forgive me. Once we started to discuss this, I realized I should've asked this question earlier. By voting yes, I am voting to give the variance correct, not to cut the overhang off. Okay, I just want to be clear, yes.
Haney.
No.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Panado.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Variance passes seven-one.
So your variance request is approved.
Okay, thank you.
Next tabled item, B-18-50, Edward Designs and Construction, north side of East Robinson, west of FedEx Shipping Center. Variance for deviation of commercial design standards presented by Bates and Associates. All right.
I don't know if... I don't know if they're actually gonna come tonight. But I think they may have been understanding the staff to work this out. But I was gonna show you the sample that we had and that they brought in from our discussion previously last Planning Commission. And this is basically the tilt-up concrete with the sandblasts, which has a texture for that. And that is what we asked for in our planning, like our commercial design standards, that it has some kind of texture on the tilt-up concrete. They can do it. A smooth tilt-up concrete cannot be done. So this one's been sandblasted and it has a texture. So we just didn't want y'all to think we just took it off of the Planning Commission agenda and we wanted y'all to have an opportunity to see what they were actually doing.
Because it was actually tabled. It wasn't left for separate work out. So that's why we got the sample. Aaron has it in his office. We know what it looks like.
Yeah, along with some other items that I kind of collect from these events. But we still wanted to give y'all an opportunity to kind of see what they were doing from a Planning Commission standpoint. And if you had any questions about it, make it available. So just let me know.
We still need to vote on this.
We still need to vote that that allows that piece, that material to be used because it's not exactly clear. Once we have that, we know that from now on. If that's what they propose, we can use it from now on, if this variance is granted.
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
If you have ever seen a tilt-up slab that is smooth, it is just not very attractive.
Right.
This break that they have in this, while maybe not picture-perfect, is much better than just a smooth, flat wall.
Yeah.
And that's the whole idea why it says not... You can't do smooth because of the look. But this is just... You know, sometime we get really textured finishes. We get something with lines and colors worked into it. But this is just a... Well, and I think this will be good to see also that we can see it go up. And I mean, the one piece looks good. So we'll see how that goes up and that... And if that's the case, we can make a change to the ordinance to address it jointly. Allow that type of thing. So we need a call for...
Call for the votes.
Yeah, okay.
Call for vote by Mrs. Haney.
That would be to accept.
Haney.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Panado.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Variance passes eight-zero. Let's see, B-18-51 is a tabled per applicant. That was Edward Designs and Construction for 2370 Ford Avenue. Next tabled item is waiver, 18-25, Brittenham Construction, 3325 Butterfly, waiver sidewalk requirement presented by Brittenham Construction.
I'm Ben Harvey with Brittenham Construction. Pull that one up there. So basically, when we had started construction on this lot, we noticed that across the street, the other home that had been constructed had been granted a waiver for their sidewalk. So throughout construction, we discussed it with the inspector. And he suggested as we got close to completion, in order to receive our certificate of occupancy, we would need to request a waiver for that section of sidewalk.
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
Was that a waiver or a payment in lieu of?
It was a waiver.
It was a waiver, okay. So my comment on that is both to the north and the south, there's subdivisions on the other side sidewalk on Butterfield Coach. We've got the park system. We've got schools, more than one school in that area. And the city is really making a substantial investment promoting walkability in the community. And so I would feel more comfortable if you went with a payment in lieu of or a bill of assurance because otherwise, it's gonna fall to the other citizens to pick up the cost of your sidewalk, which will eventually go in.
So you're saying to the north and the south, there's sidewalks connecting to this subdivision that we are?
There are sidewalks. They're on the other side of the street. But other subdivisions have done their part, as we asked, throughout the community. And if you don't do it, that means that the rest of the citizens have to pick up the tab for that down the line when it's done.
I understand there's another issue with the drainage ditch that runs along where the proposed sidewalk is supposed to be.
So then you could do a payment in lieu of and just pay for the sidewalk. And it would go in at a different later time. Is that something they can do?
They can make payment in lieu of improvement, yes.
Is that what the other builder was required to do across the street?
I...
I don't think so.
I don't know.
Built within the last six months.
I don't know, but you do see the ones on the other side, both to the north and south, have built their sidewalk.
If I might... My concern too might be, right, I know you're talking, sidewalk would go here, I get that. And you're seeing the variance for right here. But yet, we've got the stub right here. A connector here, a crosswalk here certainly would access both directions, so...
To the park. And we're gonna have... I think we just approved a plan for more houses to go in south of you, so on the same side that you're on. So I mean, there's gonna be people walking to that park and that's gonna be an access point, so...
Yeah, I guess my concern or my question would be, how do you construct that sidewalk, given the drainage along Butterfield Coach right now? Because where the sidewalk is supposed to be is a drainage ditch that runs along the west side perimeter of this property.
Talking about right there?
Yeah. And so where it's shown and platted to go is a drainage ditch. So I don't know if you'd have like, you know, it would require a lot more additional work along that side. It's kind of hard to see it from that picture.
But I mean, to at least do payment in lieu of eventually... I mean, at least somebody else isn't gonna be picking up cost for that.
So that's an option.
That's an option. I mean, that'd be something...
I think what... You can leave it as is and you can hear it as is. Or if you're interested as far as the option as well, we can consider that either on it. So we can vote on either one.
Well...
You don't have to change anything if you...
Yeah, I would like to know the result of the first option before I would want to vote on having to pay for it.
Okay.
Well, this is a recommendation to City Council anyway. If the waiver is greeted, it has to be granted by council. Because in essence, they're the only one that commit tax dollars to do the improvement if you're not required to do it. If you're willing to do payment in lieu of improvements, that can be done, it doesn't have to go to council. But if you want the true waiver to be heard, it has to go to council next week.
I would like the true waiver to be heard.
Okay, so the question is whether or not you want to recommend a waiver or you want to recommend payment in lieu. That's your option.
So I need a recommendation.
Are you recommending... Your call is for granting the waiver? It is for what? So you're making a motion?
No, no.
So he made a call for the vote to...
He's called for the vote. He's asking for a variance.
He's asking for a waiver for the entire... The waiver, so it's a motion, no? If you can vote on the waiver request and if the recommendation is not to grant the waiver, it goes to council with that recommendation, that you're not recommending the waiver.
So I'm hearing a recommendation to go ahead and call for the vote on the waiver as is from Dr. Compton. Okay? Do I have a second?
It's a call for the vote, you don't have to have a second. He's calling for a vote just on the waiver request as written. That's all you're talking about, yes or no?
That's what you wanted, yeah.
Correct.
Mueller.
No.
Parsley.
Yes.
Panado.
No.
Powell.
No.
Tyler.
No.
Compton.
No.
Covert.
No.
Haney.
No.
This does not pass seven-one.
So the recommendation will go to council not to grant the waiver.
Okay, so what's... I mean, I guess I'm... You have to excuse my experience, it's my first time I've been here. So what's the step now if we're gonna do the payment in lieu? If you're not gonna grant the waiver, then we'd want to pursue the payment in lieu, obviously, as opposed to doing it.
You have the option to go to council and ask them if they would grant the waiver to you as well. Because the Planning Commission's recommending that that not be granted. The only other two options are available is payment in lieu of a bill of assurance, which is a lien on the property if it's built sometime in the future. It can go to council with a waiver and then council has to decide which one of those options they want to approve.
So if it... When it goes to council, they'll say, "We decline the waiver, but we'll accept a payment in lieu"?
They could, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next section is rezoning, R-18-40, Opt LLC, 4003 South Thompson, from SF2 to C2, presented by David Carruth.
Good evening. I'm David Carruth. I'm attorney for OPT LLC. We're asking that there be a rezoning of a part of this property from SF2 to C2. As you look at the map, basically, the square that makes up the right half of the property and the line where Commercial 2 exists. Thank you very much. Y'all must have somebody 25 years or younger doing all this because only someone 25 years or younger can make these things work this well. The zone line is about where the arrow has been moving on the map. To the left is currently zoned C2. To the right is zoned SF2. The property has been used commercially for years. I believe, don't hold me to this, it was grandfathered in when the zoning took place. It was used as a salvage yard for years, going back into the 50s and 60s. That use is no longer there. OPT LLC is wanting to sell the property. That area is growing into a commercial area. If you're not familiar with where it is, it's at the corner of Black Oak and Thompson. So we're seeking a recommendation from the Planning Commission to rezone the part that is SF2 to Commercial 2 to be in conformity with the rest of the property.
Any questions or comments from the audience?
And I did get some cards back. I sent an affidavit in last night. I don't know if y'all have seen that or not. Of what I have received or the return receipt notices, I have sent notice to everyone. I did get some back.
Okay, we just need you to give us the one that you got back. It doesn't matter.
Do you need the originals?
Or a copy of them is fine.
I've fact... I emailed one to Mr. Kate last night. I didn't know if y'all picked that up. So I can leave a copy with you if you'd like. It doesn't matter. But I have provided y'all with that last night. I did not receive any more today.
Staff comments?
I think this is one of those situations where an arbitrary line was drawn about 330 feet down 71 to create commercial zoning. And that's how it got to be C2. It started out with just commercial many, many years ago and it hasn't changed over time. The comprehensive land use plan indicates commercial use for the area. The rezoning request is recommended for approval. It's in keeping with its goals and policies as recommended for approval. Approve the city's economic base and tax structures through the promotion of healthy, stable commercial concentrations. Ensure adequate land allocation for commercial areas of sufficient size and in proper locations. And encourage the development of a wide range of commercial development for the residents and tourists to include neighborhood community and regional centers. If you'll remember, that property is greatly cleaned up from what it used to be.
That's it? Okay. It's to the commission?
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mrs. Haney.
Parsley.
Yes.
Panado.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Rezoning passes eight-zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance and it goes to council next Tuesday night because there'll only be one... Right now, only one council meeting in December.
Thank y'all very much. May we be excused?
Thank you, yes. Next rezoning, 18-42, DND Rental LLC has been tabled per staff.
Unless someone's here that has an affidavit to show that all of the adjacent property owners waived their right for notice because they were not sent certified return receipt requested. So unless somebody's here with that affidavit, we can't hear this tonight. Think they were just... I got an email back and they're okay going to January.
Okay. Next rezoning, 18-43, Bible Missionary Church, 176 West County Lawn Roads, from MF12 to P1, presented by Gray Rock.
Hey, good evening. My name is Dirk Thibodeau. I'm with Gray Rock, representing the church. We're requesting to rezon from the MF12 to P1. The property was... It was purchased as the MF12, which doesn't comply with the zoning for a church. And so we're just bringing it to compliance.
Staff comments?
The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates medium-low density residential use for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Acquisition of desirable sites without advance of need. Use that commonly have moderate to large-scale assemblies of people such as churches, funeral homes, membership organizations, and other institutions should be appropriately located. Unadequate-sized parcels with sufficient space to accommodate the off-street parking and accessory needs such issues should be located so as to minimize any adverse or undue significant burden on adjacent or adjoining land uses as well as that portion of the street system.
Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission?
Call for the vote?
Call for vote by Mr. Covert.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Rezoning passes eight zero?
Staff will prepare the ordinance. It goes to council next Tuesday evening.
Yes, thank you.
And council is at what time? Is it six?
It's at six, yes.
Next item is conditional use, C eighteen dash twenty-seven, K Mac Enterprises, seventeen twenty-eight East Robinson Avenue, tandem lot split, presented by Bill Terry of Y Engineers. Y Engineers, sorry.
Bill Terry with Y Engineers.
Devin, I do have...
Thank you.
We're here to do the lot split. The Taco Bell's under, under construction now. This will be the remaining one point two acres, plus or minus in the rear. It's just, I don't know what else to say, other than we're just looking for the lot split to happen, and...
Okay. Staff comments?
Basically, you will be providing the access easement across the property that has frontage on four twelve through the parking lot?
Correct.
Or through the driveway of that to the parking, to the track on the north, so it will be paved as that project is completed?
Correct.
Okay. Because it has to have paved access to go.
Yes.
If it, if we do that lot split, the current zoning that we have for this, does it apply to...
The property was all zoned commercial to start with.
Okay.
It remains, there's no minimum frontage for commercial property on, on a, on a street. It's the paved access to it, which, well, they can't actually file a lot split until that paved access is there, so...
Correct.
If you go out that way, the, the building's under construction. It's come up a long ways already.
Correct.
Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission?
Motion to approve. This is a call for the vote. Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mrs. Haney.
Al?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Conditional use passes eight zero?
Staff will prepare. The resolution goes to council next Tuesday evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next section is replats, eighteen dash zero-six, replat of track two of Andrew Marks, nine hundred Bulldog Avenue, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jason Apple with ESI. Currently, this is in one lot of this subdivision. We're creating nine lots with this request. I'll answer any questions.
The variance can't be heard because the notification wasn't sent out in time, so this is just the replay.
I don't know really why the variance was there. So it doesn't affect these tracks, so I don't, I don't think we need a variance, so...
Well, we kind of questioned that too, but, okay.
Staff comments?
All comments from the utility companies and other city departments must be addressed prior to approval. That's a standard comment. Staff only has a few minor administrative comments to work out with the surveyor, and you need the surveyor's signature as the other thing.
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission? Call for the vote?
Call for the vote?
Call for vote by Mr. Covert.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Replat passes eight zero?
If you want the replat to go to council next Tuesday evening, be in our office by Thursday.
Good. Thank you.
The next replat, eighteen dash zero-eight, for silent no subdivision, has been tabled per applicant. Large-scale developments, Bible Missionary Church, large-scale has been tabled. Board of adjustments, B eighteen dash fifty-three, LD Gibson Properties LLC, six fifteen North Kansas. Variance for deviation in lot size from ten thousand five hundred square feet to nine thousand thirty-five square feet, presented by Larry Gibson.
Have your authorization?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
No, Larry's not gonna be here tonight.
My name is Steve Butcher. I'm standing in for Larry tonight. Basically, he owns the property at six fifteen North Kansas. There's a small house there now. He'd like to demo that house and build a duplex there, but he's a little bit short on the square footage required for a duplex. He's nine thousand thirty-five square feet. He's asking for a variance on that.
Staff comments?
He still will be able to meet the setback requirements?
Yes, ma'am.
In that, the duplex will actually face to the north, correct?
It will face north, correct.
Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission?
Call for the vote?
Call for vote by Mrs. Haney.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Variance passes eight zero?
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next variance, B eighteen dash fifty-five, Mark Girth, Girth Properties LLC, that it was withdrawn per applicant. Waivers, W eighteen dash twenty-eight, Rosa Tapia, eight ninety North Monitor, waiver sidewalk requirement, presented by Rosa Tapia.
Hi, my name is Rosa, and I was wanting a waiver...
Can you pull that mic down just a little? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rosa, and I wanted a waiver for my sidewalk in order to pass my final inspection. I did submit some pictures where you could see, like, there's no sidewalks either on the sides or in front of where the property is.
One one, guys. Have you got a C of O for your property, for your house yet?
What is that? Like...
Authorization to move into it?
No.
No? Are you living there already?
I am.
No, that my, I don't have recommendations for.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission?
I'm just gonna make the same comment that I always make, that the city is making a substantial investment in promoting walkability in the community. You have a school going out, further out in that direction, so at least a payment in lieu of would help pay for accessibility when time comes, rather than the other citizens having to pick it up cost-wise.
What exactly is that? I mean, this would be my first time actually, like, wanting a waiver for a sidewalk. Like, what is...
So it basically mean that you wouldn't have to put the actual physical sidewalk in at this point in time?
Okay.
But the estimated cost as far as associated with that, that you would do the payment in advance of that, but not necessarily to put that in?
If in the future they were to put a sidewalk in, or the rest of...
You had already paid your portion.
The city would hold the money into, in an escrow account until work was done on that street, and then that money would be used to help pay the cost of putting the sidewalk when it's done in the future.
Okay.
Aaron, what's the, did you get an estimated footage cost of this one? We didn't get an estimate of what? How, how wide is the lot? Do you know?
My entrance is fifty-two.
I'm sorry?
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two feet?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So we can hear it as is, as far as a recommendation? And again, we're just making a recommendation on this to council. They're the final approval on this whole piece.
Okay.
We can hear it as is, or you could, we could do a recommendation as far as payment in lieu of.
Okay.
This is very similar to the one that we heard before.
Well, since supposedly it's a new regulation, when you do a new building to do your sidewalk, does that mean, like, the other property owners who already have their, I mean, does their driveway, are they gonna, how does that work?
If there's an existing one, no. If it's new construction, then they're required to do it with the new construction.
Okay.
And you just built a house there, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's what it kicks into effect, is when you build a new house there, you're required to do the sidewalk.
The sidewalk.
Along the frontage of your, of your property.
All right. Okay, then I'll just...
And it's not brand new. It's been around for a while, but there's some that are...
Okay. I guess I'll just go ahead.
With a waiver?
Yeah.
Okay.
With a waiver as it's written? With a waiver as it's written here? That's the question?
So you're, again, if a call for vote is yes or no, it's recommending a way...
I just want to remind, if you've been out there and looked at that area, the topography of that area, there would be, there's quite a bit of construction that needed to be done for an individual to put a sidewalk in there. So just the square footage, just by looking at it and looking at the area that would be covered, the length, as, as what we would look at on a flat area, the cost would be significant, in my opinion, on this, just because of topography. You'd have to cut in back into the slope. You'd have to lay that slope back, because you do have a pretty good little angle down through there. So keep that in mind on this. It's, it is a, it is a little bit of a steep slope back here.
But her estimate wouldn't take into account all that extra cost, Aaron, I'm looking at...
Well, because on the, also, like, it has this, they, the inspector actually told me it would be kind of hard to put in a sidewalk in, because of how, there's like a ditch, and then there's like a little hill coming down.
It is, it is a little difficult, because not only of that, it's just the way that that hill comes down and ties into that ditch. You would have to actually cut back into that hill to meet ADA requirement standards. You would have to do quite a bit of dirt work to...
That's where the payment in lieu of could be a beneficial alternative in that one, because it's gonna be at a standard rate on that, and not taking all that into consideration.
Which is true, but I just wanted that to be on her, on her account. It is, it is a little more than just making a sidewalk.
Mm-hmm.
So do I have a call for the vote?
Call for the vote?
Call for vote by Mr. Covert.
Covert?
No.
Haney?
No.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Voting as is?
As is.
Grant the waiver, yes.
Grant the waiver. Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Uh, this passes six two.
Staff will prepare the resolution. It goes to council next week with a recommendation to grant the waiver.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, W eighteen dash twenty-nine, Bible Missionary Church. Again, this is a tabled item. Last waiver for sidewalk requirement, eighteen dash thirty, Charlie Adams, sixteen oh five Steel Avenue, waiver sidewalk requirement, presented by Charlie Adams.
Hello, my name is Charlie Adams, thirty-eight eighty-five Julio Road in Springdale. We're asking for a sidewalk waiver, because the sidewalk, I mean, here's a couple pictures I'm trying to get out. If I could pass them, I couldn't get them in time. It's gonna wind up being right into a telephone pole, and the other side's gonna be going right into a drainage ditch. The subdivision is sixty-three years old, no curb and guttering, and it's a very short street, so I, the, the odds of us getting any curb and guttering over there is gonna be very limited, I believe. So in order to get to the sidewalk when we pour it, you're gonna have to cross a ditch to get up to the sidewalk, and then when you get to the end of it, you get to wind up back in a ditch.
Just to remind you, this is a property we recently just rezoned to MF twelve to allow you to put a duplex in.
MF four, not MF twelve.
MF two.
MF two, yes, for twenty-eight hundred square foot duplex. That is correct.
To put a duplex in, yeah.
Yes, that is correct.
Right.
Good.
Now, recommend waiving subdivision, I mean...
Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission?
I'm gonna, I won't go through my comments, but the same as before is, I think it's really important. We're promoting walkability. We've got to start somewhere eventually. I'd love to see that we go back and catch up, especially with the infill like this. And, you know, downtown community, we've got infill coming. We've got to have our sidewalks.
And I totally agree, I totally agree on that, on the east side of Springdale, where we just build a duplex and we put a sidewalk to nowhere at. But this right here, the only reason I'm asking for a waiver on this is I don't feel like this small, this short street here is, the city's gonna do anything with it. Like I said, the subdivision is sixty-three years old. I would think that the city is gonna put any curb and guttering or put any other sidewalks down, they would already done it. If I pay in lieu of it, I'll probably be gone before that ever happens over on the subdivision. You know, the last waiver I did ask for, I did pay in lieu of, because I'm like you, I feel like the sidewalk should be there on normal areas where you can walk. But this area right here, it's such a short street, I don't think that that comes into effect.
What are the plans for this street? I don't think there's any plans for any improvements in it.
It's be a call for the vote?
Eric, question, is the, on the West End Street, down at the, just down at the end there, does, is that paved all, sidewalk all the way back to Elmdale School? I can't remember.
You pull back out? There was a Safe Roots to School project to...
Another sidewalk?
Yeah, there's sidewalks on both sides of the street there.
And it goes all the way down to the streets. Yeah, that goes all, that goes all the way back to Elmdale School, which is not too far away.
There's a lot of kids that walk in, in this area of the school.
Every, I walk a lot in the community. When I even have one house or two houses worth of walking on a sidewalk, I feel safer. And I'm happy to have, you know, I'm on the street some of the time, and on sidewalks when I can be.
And there are quite a few kids in that sixty-three-year-old neighborhood.
That's a heavy walking area. Lots of walkers.
I, I agree with Veeve on this. I would believe a payment in lieu would be an excellent option for this, this area here.
So again, the question is, do you want the waiver request heard as is?
Yes.
It's be a call for the vote?
Call for the vote?
Call for vote by Mr. Covert.
Haney?
No.
Mueller?
No.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
No.
Powell?
No.
Tyler?
No.
Compton?
No.
Covert?
No.
This does not pass seven one.
Staff will prepare the resolution, and the recommendation to council will be to...
Okay, thank you.
Not grant the waiver.
So, before we go on to the next section, I mean, just dealing with these, I'll make this comment again, like I have before. I think this is something in a work session that we need to address at some point in time of, I agree with walkability of the city, but I don't agree that there needs to be sidewalks in every single location, because if we actually were to do a study like they do as far as street usage, I would highly question a lot of the usage of some of the sidewalks in that whole piece. I do think that those dollars can be used for other things, as far as the bikeability and, and those types of initiatives on that. But something that we should probably consider as far as, what do we do different in this whole piece as far as some additional options? To where dollars can be used in more conducive areas of the city versus this. So if we can maybe look at doing that in a work session or something like that, I think we should. Other items that we have, B sixteen dash seventy-two, Lane Moore, forty-eight seventy-six North Thompson. One-year extension for a two-year bill of assurance granted on December sixth, twenty sixteen, presented by Lane Moore.
Lane Moore represented Nets Companies. We're just running behind getting it. We've got bids from multiple contractors, but the weather got here before we got asphalt laid. We're also gonna explore possibly adding a shop building and hiring some more employees, so we would need to do that piece before we paved as well. We'd be tearing up some asphalt we just put down.
Okay, so you're saying there's a possibility you're gonna be submitting a large-scale development plan to show construction. What's your timeframe on that?
We are, we're looking at the feasibility of it at this point, if we have enough market to support that now, or if it's gonna be a couple year down the road project.
How long of an extension are you asking for?
We'll do a year. We'll pave in the spring more than likely.
You're asking for a six-month extension?
Well, we wrote it up as a year.
It said spring, so I was gonna give you six months to get started.
I've got the quote right here and signed it.
Okay.
It's not a money issue. It's just, we had other things got in the way, and we opened another facility in Ohio, and this kind of fell off the table. I dropped it a little bit.
So your quest could be to, for a one-year extension?
Yes.
For this two-year bill of assurance, okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission?
Call for the vote?
Call for vote by Mr. Powell.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
One-year extension passes eight zero?
He'd come by the office and sign a bill of assurance for that one-year extension.
Okay, when will you have it ready? Next week.
Yeah, yeah. We got a lot to get ready by Tuesday. We're not used to having council meetings following Tuesday, so...
No, that's fine. I'm actually traveling to Texas for the company. I won't be back till Tuesday or Wednesday next week anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. See, we have a L sixteen dash fifteen, Ozark Center Point Place West, one-year extension, presented by Kelly Hamblin.
Hi, I'm Kelly Hamblin, and I'm representing St. Matthias for this project. We have construction plans submitted to both the planning office and the engineering department. They were submitted about a month ago, and they're just waiting for review. We're just kind of overlapping that deadline that we need. We need another extension. Matthias, St. Matthias is intending to get started on this this summer.
Again, you're asking for a one-year extension?
Yes, ma'am.
Has this had an extension before?
I don't think so.
It has.
Oh, it has?
It had one last year. Mm-hmm.
Because I, I remember this project, and it seems like it's been on the books forever.
It, it has. I, I think that some, you know, inter-office business things have come up for Sam, and it hasn't been high on the priority list, but I think it's getting up there, so...
Does anything change with, because is this over where the Fifty-Sixth Street expansion is or anything?
Is it front on to Fifty-Sixth Street, or back up to Fifty-Sixth Street?
It does on Gene George Boulevard. It's already improved.
Oh, this portion's already been done?
Yeah, this, this portion. I think Sam might, might have actually built that portion.
Okay.
There is some fire hydrant issues that need to be addressed that didn't get put in with the first section that needs to be added to this one, I believe.
Okay, I had sent something to the fire department, but I hadn't heard back yet.
She's, she's telling the truth. I haven't gotten to it yet with all the emails that's coming in.
There, there are a few things going on, people. Let me tell you, it's, it's really busy in Springdale these days. It really is. It's good.
That's real good.
It still takes us a while to get through things, yes.
I'm glad we can use this for confession for you.
I have to admit, she's absolutely right. I just hadn't got to it yet, and we did have an issue with a building that got built, and Mr. Matthias and, and Steve Williams said that, you know, when we build the next stuff in there, we'll take care of that, that A hydrant for you, so we'll work on it.
It addressed.
Okay. All right. Any questions from the audience to the commission?
Call for the vote?
Call for vote by Mr. Powell.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Uh, one-year extension passes eight zero?
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Planning Director's report?
We do not have a work session this month. We had our Christmas dinner scheduled for Thursday, and as you know, had a fire, so they, we did hear from them yesterday. They have, the tenth is available if we want to move it to that date, or the week of the seventeenth.
They said any day, the week of, the seventeenth is on a Monday, so seventeenth through, Monday through Friday, they could get us then. Or if y'all wanted to wait until January and...
We can do that, too.
I mean, we've done that in the past, too, so...
I have a conflict with Monday, Monday the tenth, but if y'all want to do it that night, we'll just, we just need to let them know if we want to try to pick a date that week, so...
So just as a reminder, we talked about a little bit earlier, Springdale Christmas, or Christmas Springdale is on the thirteenth. So unless we just want to have just one meal after another for this week, which I think is, for me, is too much.
I think if we put it off, then we also, we can still have Brian come back for his send-off.
Yeah, Brian's still paying.
Brian, would you be paying for this in lieu of, of improvements or for the food for us? Yeah, payment in lieu of, I think that's a good idea. We'll just need a credit card before you leave tonight.
I think the construction cost is gonna be too high on that.
But we might have a new, a new person also that we could include and welcome in, so...
All right, so we'll, we'll move it to January.
Okay. Do we want to pick a date, or we want to just visit with them and see what's a, what's a good time, or do y'all want to pick a date?
Let's wait till the January meeting, and we'll decide then. Okay?
The other thing I have is, I, I gave y'all a copy of some proposed changes for the, for a food truck court. I would like to move those forward to our first public hearing, so we can get started, because there are, there are beginning to get more pressures to get something in place for food truck courts. So if y'all don't have a problem, we'll schedule, schedule it for a public hearing at the January meeting.
Yes, sir.
The next fire code's gonna address some issues on mobile vending, but just for y'all to be aware, Fedville had a fire on mobile vending right up next to the building, and it creeped up next to the building. They said they told them to stay ten feet away, and they'd moved it closer over some period of time. So just be aware that these, these are being utilized due to the fact that there's not a lot of codes on them. And two ladies died in, up north, when they hooked up their propane tank wrong, and that's when NFBA started kicking in, and the code started kicking, saying, you know, we better address this, so...
I did put in it that they have to be twenty feet from the property line, because I knew you would want twenty feet to get around back through there, because I've been around this guy a long time. I know, hey, I think it's like that kind of stuff. So at least to give us a first chance to look at it, get some public input on it, and then we can move it forward after that. It can sit for a long time, but we really need to get this thing moving forward. The water and sewer department has some questions or some comments they want to make, too, and hopefully we'll have all those by the time we get to that January meeting to, The water and sewer department has some questions or some comments they want to make, too, and hopefully we'll have all those by the time we get to that January meeting to, to at least take comments, and then we can take that back to the work session in January.
Okay. Brian?
Well, it's a cat's out of the bag. I'm, I'm leaving the planning commission, so if y'all didn't know that, I turned in my resignation letter as of the December thirty-first, and I just wanted to publicly thank the mayor, the city council for having or trusting me to, to be here. The planning department for all of your, your hard diligent work and putting up with me, and my ignorant questions sometimes, but you, you, you put up with me, and I appreciate that. Our past members, Joe Kelsey, Jerry Horton, Bill Locke, they really taught me a lot when I came on here, and they really helped me out quite a bit. For each one of you guys, there, there's, there's so much talent on this planning commission, and I, and I'm not real sure that the city as a whole really understands truly the work that each one of you guys and all of us have put into this, and, and I am so excited about the, the person that may be coming in here. It's going to enhance the talent that's on this, this council, and y'all are, y'all are awesome. Kevin, I'm, I'm telling you, you're a great leader. And we real appreciate all that you've done, but I appreciate every one of you guys. This, this new adventure on the city council is gonna be new, and it's gonna be an adventure. There's no doubt about it, but I'm looking so forward to it, and I believe in this city with all my heart. So I really appreciate you guys, and Merry Christmas to you all.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate all your, your years of service on this, and now the real fun begins.
The real fun begins, yeah.
Just remember, it's the first Tuesday of every month to be here. It's the first Tuesday of every month to be here, but you get to sit over there.
Yeah.
We'll keep you entertained.
Appreciate it.
All right, anything else? All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you all. Merry Christmas.